We have a building right on top of this and then it runs back to the railroad tracks.
I thought that was your...
At least that's what we were told.
The construction actually haven't done anything, has it?
My boss said it's done.
Yeah, the legislation says they're doing it.
That's about a house development, isn't it?
This, uh, with the housing development is along 142, between Sharp and...
Between Sharp and Andrew Court West.
Really?
Um...
Separate the meetings sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah, that's what you gotta do.
Separate the areas. It's a different area.
So, I was wondering, so there's a whole difference about self-technology that's already on the other exit. And whether or not it cuts teeth, uh, to being a utility developer and to... To, uh, so he has a lot of...
Oil.
Waking me in peace.
You have June...
Are we at the point where I said, because the amount, the amount of certified... You know, I'm not, uh, way limited in terms of the utility concern. I thought the version where, um, a point of some...
I have to lie.
He's like...
Why are you using the city fund at this time of year? Uh, now, preparation. Next, next, June 4th.
Yeah, it comes due at the end of the year. Well, we probably should. We probably should have started a month ago. So you can put the bids out or put it out to bid and give people time to call up the bids and then accept it by the end of the year.
Strategic aggregation.
So we were behind last time. Yeah, we were, we were behind last time and now we're probably...
Almost planted you, telling you, "Oh, you got it done," wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, it was like March.
What's the north fire department?
Right over here, High Street.
So I thought I had it.
That's north, the other one's south.
I've checked it.
Oh, yeah.
There's that.
Are you positive?
And he said that there's a couple, it's a whole big mess of things that are... Any...
I need you to send us that.
It's, it's one to raise our rates and work and stuff. Oh, five about double.
What's Madison Reserve that year?
That's the housing development off usually next to 142.
Or is it called Madison Reserve or something?
If you could just tell them, you can...
Sorry.
Fixing in the whole last night.
Well, lucky deal. This is, I'm good. I have mail. I'm only in like seven minutes.
Yes.
But I did laugh, yeah. So I got, I got jacked.
Sorry, is it making perfect use of the...
I boosted it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the face she spelled it.
So, okay, did you have a higher rate for that or did it was so...
You know, she spilled just one of my kids wrong. But it's so...
Yeah, it's more behind.
But Connie, Connie's last name.
She missed the...
Right now, they're, uh, on 42, Ed's working at South Charles. I don't know if they rent that space or what, but I think...
My son is still writing.
Yeah, I got...
Wow, I don't even know how to do that. Sorry, my son won't do that.
I got another one from Rock Street.
They won't be trying to say, "He was just here one day a week."
Uh, sometimes I think, probably has a lot of stuff going on.
Sometimes first people also...
I gave, I gave that. I gave Matt the copy of the minutes in the...
He still needs June.
Right, the June one in there.
And then I, I brought the ones I just wrote today, but they haven't been approved, so...
Oh, oh, you get wait till there's...
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. And I will, I'll send him June's. I didn't copy him today, my email. And I should, I just didn't think of it. At least I don't think I did.
But the blame for that stuff there is...
Well, it's right behind us. I don't know if this is allowed.
Oh, the AC? Yeah.
It just, it is, especially if people talk into their microphone.
Well...
Mr. Mayor.
He'll get, he's getting them.
Will, will you get the AC down? The AC? Sorry?
No, I just, I just turned it on. It'll take a second.
Oh, okay. I didn't see you do that, I'm sorry.
No, that's Kenneth. The law director with his, Kenneth Holmes, the auditor. Yes, that's who, that's Kenneth. Oh, she comes to quite a few meetings. She comes to work here.
Every financing question.
Oh, okay, she...
Yes. Am I supposed to really respond?
Pardon me?
Yes.
It's a good feeling. You can stay there, you can move up.
Kind of feel like I swallowed a...
It's hard when you go... Just make sure you speak.
People saying they couldn't hear you. They couldn't hear me at all.
Yeah.
They couldn't hear you, buddy, on the radio either.
I know, I'm sorry.
So, we're gonna help you. Speak in the...
Yes, and they're both from London. Yeah, yeah.
It's hard, you don't know anybody.
I was, yeah.
That's where I was when I was seventy, sixty-eight.
He was, he was a muskino and wouldn't have known anyone there. So I'm glad he's, he's, and one of those boys probably since elementary school. And the other one all through high school.
Well, that's good.
But he's met.
Still hard to believe it, though, I feel like that.
His little sister's missing, I know that.
Yeah, I bet.
Yeah.
That's why I knew in little... This Toby Meyer, she's preschool and Toby's in first grade and she kind of missed... She expected him all the time.
Yes.
It's kind of good for her to be...
Yes.
I guess she's no longer.
Oh, absolutely.
He was helping her to count last week, Jay said. And he knows that you're the same as he did, so she knew it. He was one, he was two, he would do one, one of them. I mean, she knew all of it, she was pretty good. I thought finance season was five. I came at five last week.
It was five thirty.
It was a five thirty. I don't know why I went down five o'clock. He had on my right ear, which...
Make sure that mic's adjusted, please. All here to be here, I believe. All here to be here, right? Thanks, man. We'll call this council meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for silent reflection.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman Hayes. Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Here.
As you can see, Council President Peters had another engagement tonight. His daughters, uh, competing in, for London High School on the golf team, they had a match tonight. And we got word earlier today that Councilman Hayes was not gonna make it. Moving on to the minutes, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all approves the minutes by a voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Very much. We have no public hearings that I'm aware of tonight. No communications and announcements that I'm aware of tonight. So we'll move on to audience concerns. I have Matt Daly. Please step up and state your name and address, please. Well, let's make sure the microphone's working for you.
My name's Matt Daly. I live at ninety-nine Andrew Court West. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for the time. I was here, wanted us to speak about the Madison Reserve, uh, development that's been proposed and passed through the Planning Commission. Essentially, density levels this high, I believe, deserves special scrutiny by the council and everyone else that's approving the development. I believe this is four point nine units per acre, uh, with approximately seven hundred and fifteen people, uh, that will be, uh, there. And developer has done a good job listening to all the community concerns and addressing those. Is there anything I need to do about the feedback? Sorry about that. But I, I, I still think there's two outstanding items that are of great concern to the, uh, community members around. The first one's traffic. I mean, we have, uh, East High there. We're gonna be adding, like I said, two hundred and sixty-nine units there. So that's gonna be adding a lot of traffic, uh, with two, two entrances to the unit, uh, the development portion there. What I would like council to do before, uh, the approval is get a traffic engineering study done about what is the optimal way to have people enter and exit those units. Right now, I think we're on revision two of the, the plan that was been given out. I would like an independent traffic engineer to take a look at this and figure out what's the best way we can handle this. So we don't get into a situation like Roberts Road up in Hilliard where thirty years ago was a one, uh, two-lane road, whatever, and it's become increasingly, uh, ton of traffic, ton of traffic lights and stuff like that. If we have options to put in a traffic circle in one of the entrances, uh, to help, help, help the flow of traffic, that'd be awesome. But we can only do that, but while, uh, for example, the, uh, eastern side there entrance has field on both sides. Once these houses go up, once these roads start getting pla- uh, plotted and everything like that, we don't have this option anymore. So I, I would like to be able to get an optimal solution that we can have. The second big concern is there's no parks included with this development. There is some green space, but there's no continuous park-like setting and, uh, things. Our existing code does have, uh, for sub, uh, sub, uh, sub-units, uh, or sub-developments, whatever you wanna call it, ten acres per, per a thousand people. This is gonna be about seven hundred and fifteen people. We need seven acres of park to go along with this. The closest parks to this development are Cowling at thirty-eight minutes walk, Merrimack's a fifty-two minute walk, um, the library's a twenty-eight minute walk, and the schools are a fifty-minute walk. We need something for these kids to do so they're not just playing out in the streets and getting in the mischief and they have time to burn off their energy. On this side of town, we don't have any of that available. We need that infrastructure with this kind of density development. So... I don't have an opinion of a development to share with you right now, but those are my concerns, uh, that we take a look at the traffic going in and out of it and we look away to get some park access to these people that are gonna be moving in so they don't have, affect the adjacent properties with kids running around the streets and everything like that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You'll note that there is gonna be a public hearing. It's currently scheduled for October second, twenty twenty-five. It'll be right before the county, it'll be during the council meeting, at the start of the council meeting for the actual public hearing on this. Thank you. Nobody else has signed up? Is there anybody else that's changed their mind that wants to come up and speak at this point?
Paul, you did, there is a, I'm sorry, there is a traffic study being commissioned for the Madison Reserve, is there not?
I'm not sure I was out the last, but, but I will check on that.
I thought, Mayor, did you mention something about a traffic study?
I said that they were doing a traffic study for that whole area as well as forty-two and one forty-two.
Oh, so it wasn't specific to the development?
So is there anyone else that's changed their mind that want to speak now? Okay. Just to say this, well, I forgot to say at the start of the meeting, um, I've heard quite a few complaints and I think even the clerk mentioned that it was very hard to hear a lot during the last meeting, so I wanna make sure that people use the microphones tonight so they can be heard. Both, if you're gonna speak from the audience, please come up to the microphone and, and the administrative table there to make sure that they use their microphones also. And a couple council members need to speak up a little more also. So it's not just the people out there. Okay, we're gonna move on to committee reports. We'll start with Ms. Jackman.
I was at the Public Service Committee meeting and I have the street department report. Bill Long had met with ODOT about a small city grant to replace Fourth Street between North Main and North Oak. I think that is pretty exciting. And then he also announced that ODOT will be doing construction on Route thirty-eight in the spring of twenty twenty-six. ODOT will pay the majority of the cost for the construction, the resurfacing, whatever exactly they're doing there. But they just need to know if London wants to participate in that. And if we do, um, ODOT will pay the vast majority of the cost for having that work done. But the city does have to participate a little bit to get that benefit. And we will talk about that later. And that is all I had from the street department.
I don't have anything. Thank you. Ms. Traynor, do you wanna, do you wanna give a report or do you wanna leave that to me or do you wanna just fill in the blanks?
Um, yeah, I, I think most of what we talked about at finance is coming up for, um, coming up on the agenda today, which is pretty long, so I'll, I'll pass on this at this stage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hitt?
Yeah, I attended the Public Service Committee meeting and, uh, we went over pretty briefly as far as the traffic calming devices and, and some criteria to go by for that, to determine where to place, um, traffic calming devices. Uh, we had a work session for sidewalk replacement and repair after the meeting. We also talked about, a little bit about, um, the signs outside of town, uh, where to place those and what to do with those types of signs. We also talked about establishing a line for various events within town or within London. And then we had a gentleman, Nick Rupert, that came and presented some material on, um, sanitation concerns as far as, uh, trying to remain solvent, uh, related to that. And that was about it. Our next committee meeting for Service Committee is September ninth at five o'clock in the meeting room next door. Um, I also attended the Public Finance Committee meeting and, um, as Shannon said, most of that is coming up for legislation tonight, so... Uh, the next meeting, September twenty-second at five-thirty in the meeting room next door.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes. I had, uh, attended the, uh, Public Service Committee and the Public Safety. I have the Parks and Rec report. I'll do it first. The last day will be Sunday, August thirty-first, for the pool to be shut down. They're looking at doing a new, uh, another free day before that. Been a lot of, um, fascia and soffit and gutter work at Cowling Park. Uh, Merrimack is gonna host two wiffle ball tournaments in the next couple of months. And for adults, they had, uh, sand volleyball, four teams registered, uh, co-ed softball and ballroom dancing. That's all I have from Parks and Rec.
Okay.
And I have the, uh, Fire Chiefs report.
Okay, very good.
Uh, he had, uh, departmental EMS training, pediatric resuscitation through Ohio Health, departmental fire training, aerial ladder scene placement and cul-de-sacs. He hosted several students for ride time for tolls and grant paramedic classes. He, uh, completed fire safety inspections for all schools in London, completed the annual self-contained breathing apparatus test. He picked up new chief's car awaiting graphics and radio to install and began gathering quotes for exterior repairs at one oh three East High Street. And completed reviewing new medical protocol and also attended the National Night Out. So he was pretty busy. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. I also attended the Finance Committee. I'll just give a brief update. I like to give these numbers out. So overall, for the year, the revenue for the city's sixteen million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and one dollars. I'll take the liberty to round up. And the, the expenses, I'm sorry, let's back up. Included in that number is the four point two million dollars basically for the bond for the police department. If we take that out, the actual revenue would be twelve million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and, and pardon me, five hundred and sixty-three thousand and fifteen dollars, let's get that right. And overall, the expenses were eleven million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. We also had an update from the Tax Director and without boring everyone to tears, the numbers for the year, the overall for the general funds, up about three percent. And for the Fire Department is up four point six five percent. So we have that information. We will have, our, our meeting next month's gonna be the fourth Monday of the month instead of the third. So we'll do one and we'll give that date again later, pardon me?
Why is that? I just wondered.
Just, we were just looking at, I, here's my thought. With a, a brand-new law director and they generally don't wanna have meetings on a Monday and bring things to council on Thursday. So we either had to move it up or move it back. And we meet on Monday, you guys meet on Tuesday, so we're gonna move it back and that just gives a little bit more time for the law director to process what we've done there and, and bring the things to council.
I can probably make that one.
Pardon me?
I can probably make that one.
You can probably make that one, okay. But you don't have to, but you can, you're allowed to. Okay, moving on. City officials report?
All right, you guys got a big one ahead of you, so I'm just gonna go over just a few quick things. Our intern, Nico Sadari, that we received from Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, that was attending Miami University, has completed his mapping of the storm sewer. Nico did an unbelievable job on the GIS project. Bill and I was able to go and, and watch his full presentation that he did for Morpsy with all the other interns and it was amazing how much more he did than just the other interns in that area. But he was able to put together an interactive map, which includes field collection protocol, which used the ArcGIS field maps, GPS field collection, rec- uh, receiver comparison, field classification dictionary, and then an Excel spreadsheet of the current stormwater data. I do wanna thank Nico for all his hard work and Morpsy for including us in their intern project. As you know, we received a grant to have him come work here for free this summer. He was here about eight to ten weeks. He's a wonderful young man, he's got a very bright future and I wanna wish him the best of luck as he does finish college and enters into the workforce. We did have our adult swim night on Saturday, the ninth. Had a shaved ice truck, swimming cornhole, Connect Four, sand volleyball, blow-up ax throwing and a DJ. And for the first time hosting this event, I think it was pretty well-attended and I do appreciate Parks and Rec Department and our executive assistant, Eve Breedlove, for continuing to bring these new events and new things for citizens of all ages to do in the community. We talked about, uh, Mr. Daly did come up and speak about Madison Reserve, that housing project for attainable workforce housing, and that piece of legislation is in front of City Council tonight. And as Councilman Ead said, there will be a public hearing on that. These homes are ranging in the two hundred and twenty thousand dollar plus range and fill the gap for people who can't afford or do not want the price of your homes that are being built in London. I do believe this is a product the City of London needs and gives people the opportunity to live their dream of owning a home. And as you guys will see, if you don't already know, it is on the corner of Sharp Avenue and, and East High Street. It's one thing I hear a lot is they want, people wanna buy a home or they want their kids to come back here and purchase a home. And, you know, with London Landing going for three hundred and seventy thousand dollars now or whatever those homes are going for, the two-twenty range really gives people the opportunity to come into London and purchase a, a brand-new home. Police Department building construction is moving along. We have run into some issues with some soil, but we are getting that figured out. We're continuing to, to get more information daily and, uh, we'll be coming to talk to council about that soon. And so, construction is continuing and we do look forward to the progress. Fun fact, today is seven. That is how many local businesses are participating in the DORA. So the DORA will begin tomorrow. We're excited to finally put in place the DORA and look forward to the positive impact it'll have for downtown. For those who haven't heard, the DORA is a designated outdoor refreshment area. It'll go, uh, let's see, goes from second, the second set of tracks on Main Street up to High Street and then on High Street from Main to Walnut, and then it goes from Union to Oak on both sides of First and Second. There are designated DORA beverage sellers you can get your drink from, and then all businesses in the DORA have been provided a DORA sticker. So it'll tell you if you, if they want you to bring that inside or not, or there's three different stickers. No DORA, DORA welcome, or the people who are selling for the DORA. And we've also placed the street signs in the DORA with information along the entrance and exits to tell you where it begins or where it ends. There's QR codes on everything. They have to use certain cups. So you can get more information by visiting the DORA page on our website at londonohio.gov. Thank you.
Would, would it be more cost-effective if you just had one sticker for who was participating in it? I've never seen, I don't think, three, three different stickers.
Well, if you buy, if you buy fifty stickers, I mean, fifty stickers is fifty stickers. It's not, wasn't that much to get different colors. So some people don't want them to come into their place of business with an open drink.
Right.
So... Take, for example, my business. You cannot come into my business 'cause I'm closed only, right? Closed alcohol only. So you can't come in. So I have to have a no DORA sticker. And then the ones who do wanna participate, there's a sticker. And then we gave the stickers of who, uh, who is selling.
Okay, yeah, I just, I've never seen three different stickers. I don't know why you would need a sticker if, you would just put a sticker there if you were participating in it. And then you wouldn't need any other ones, I wouldn't think. I will, I don't know.
We just wanna make it nice and clear for everybody. We wanna be respectful of all the businesses in downtown and let them make the choice themselves if they wanna participate or not participate in it, so...
The stickers are color-coded, right?
And they're color-coded. So the light blue, the light blue is, we sell. The red is... The red is, and it's a red sticker, like a stop sign, no DORA. And then, I believe, and then there's green. So like, go, in a way, but that, you know, you're welcome to come in with one.
Where do you get the cups?
So all the businesses who, I think you have a packet on your chair.
Yeah, but there's no cups on there.
Well, it tells you how to get them. So, so the city is purchasing the cups and we're not up-selling them. We're just giving them to you for what we get them for. And the businesses can get online and purchase them and then we'll get them to you.
Okay.
So with only being seven, it's kinda easy right now to be able to do that. But, yeah, they said, Eve's been going around, going to every business and explaining everything to everybody. And she said, she told me to tell you that. She was like, the movies are played at night and I never get to see them. So she said, I'll just leave her a packet there, so.
Very good.
So the seven, you said that are participating, those are seven sellers?
Sellers.
Okay, not just seven businesses along that entire area?
No, 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 there's multiple businesses that you could, but there's only seven people who can sell them. And if, if I can remember, it'd be Mad Cow, it'll be the State Theater, it'll be Ron Eddie's, it'll be London One-O-One, it will be Jims, the Eagles, the American Legion. So those are the ones who have correct licenses downtown as well as said that they wanna participate.
And that'll probably be extended when they get that event space.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, exactly. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the mayor? Safety Service Director Salzman, do you have anything you'd like to add tonight?
Not, not really. I will say, I've been busy, obviously, meeting with all the committees. Going to the construction meeting for police. I have been out and obviously meet with all the department heads, but started my visits of the sites. So especially with some of the legislation coming, the fire department, whatever, looked at some of that. But I met with both sanitation and street department, looked at their facilities, equipment, trying to get a better feel of, of those, both the workers, the equipment, the facilities we have there, so. And acting as a sponge, I guess, just trying to pull it on. There's a lot going on, so just trying to, trying to get a chance to get caught up or find out everything that's happening in parts of responsibility, the things that are going on.
So at the last meeting where we had approved the money to purchase a new sanitation truck, and this didn't come up in finance, so I haven't heard directly from anyone. Did we purchase a truck? Did we lease a truck? What did we do? Do we have a truck?
So we do have a truck. The bid was not responsive. It would not meet the needs. It wouldn't actually fit the equipment and have the controls to run it. And it wasn't gonna be responsive, that part of the bid, so we did not purchase a truck. We did enter into a six-month lease with Premier to provide a truck on a monthly, it's, it's six months, I believe that's right, yeah, six months of rental. And we have an option to extend that lease if we need to. They provided that truck the next day.
It was on the road the next day.
And it was on the road the next day. We had, one of the trucks broke down. They put it in service the same day. So I believe, I've not seen that truck, but I think it's a white truck that's out there running the routes. They're actually running that route and keeping things going. The same day it was delivered. I think either that afternoon or the next morning it went into service. They actually started using it, so.
So did that, did that change, I believe that someone had commented on social media that they're now picking up recycling again?
We're doing our best.
With the help of that truck, that happened?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so they had both trucks and one of them broke down. I think blew a hydraulic line. They were able to put that right back in service and keep going with that, with one of the older trucks and it.
Okay. Any further questions for Safety Service Director Salzman? Ms. Auditor, you never give anything. You let us do that.
I have nothing. I shared all my information on Monday.
Okay.
It was lengthy, so will tonight.
As you can see, if you haven't seen the agenda, we have five items that have been left over from the fifth reading down to the second reading. We have fifteen new items on the agenda tonight. And almost all of those came out of the finance meeting, I think. So there's a lot coming up. Very good. We'll move on to old business. Accept the motion to, for ordinance one fifty twenty-five. I'll expect, accept a motion to read by title and number. Sue moved.
Yep, that's second.
Resolution, ordinance one fifty twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, the execution and delivery of the agreement establishing SOPEC and approving the bylaws of SOPEC.
So this is, as you said, to enter into SOPEC, which is the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, and to approve, approving of their bylaws. Now, we've had a lot of discussion on this.
I can provide a little bit of an update, if you don't mind.
Okay.
So, in response to some of the community concerns from Mr. Campania that's been attending several city council sessions undertaken to locate and basically research various, various options for utility aggregators other than SOPEC. I reached out to a person known to me who has basically cut his teeth being a utility broker and was extremely familiar with utility aggregation programs on both the municipal and the commercial scale and asked him for, basically, if we were in the position to look for a broker to assist in locating a super service. And he gave me a couple of names of people that I could reach out and speak to, one of whom was an administrator of NOPEC, which is the corollary to SOPEC. It's the northern Ohio. Didn't know if we, if we were regionally excluded from that program. I haven't spoken to that person yet. The other person that I was given a name to is a person whom had several decades of experience with First Energy before starting out and with her own company, conveniently called the Strategic Aggregate Consultants, I believe. Strategic Aggregation Consultants LLC. And this is an operation that was formed to assist local communities in the development, implementation, and operation of electric, gas, and trash aggregation programs. They operate to provide an independent source of expertise to service the needs of a community at the lowest practicable cost. I have requested a meeting with, her name is Brenda Fargo, to discuss not only, hopefully, the selection of an appropriate electricity aggregator, but also whether or not it would make sense for the city to pass resolutions to engage in gas aggregation and since sanitation seems to be within their field of expertise, I intend on broaching that topic as well. So, that being stated, I would ask that this matter stay on. Both ordinance one fifty twenty-five and one fifty-one twenty-five stay on for further reading until we're in a better position to move forward with it. Thank you.
So I would like to bring Mr. Salzman into this discussion. So it was under the purview of the former Safety Service Director to start this process. I know you're new to the position. There's a lot on your plate. Have you had any opportunity to look at this or not? And it's fine if you haven't. I'm just asking at this point whether you've had the opportunity to look at that at all?
I've not had the opportunity to talk to or look at any further. At the last meeting when Shannon did, I, I hadn't taken that initiative to go further with it this time.
Okay. Well, I would think that maybe, maybe you wanna be included in a discussion or an email chain?
Yeah, it was an email, so if I get a response, I'll absolutely forward it. And if there's gonna be any kind of in-person, obviously, this is not, not my ability, but just trying to help and get some of the, you know, information gathering done.
Any further discussion? If not, at Councilwoman Traynor's suggestion, we'll leave that on for the next reading. I will note that when they were here, when SOPEC was here, basically, our deadline was the end of October, so we still have some time to do this. Moving on to ordinance one fifty-one twenty-five. We'll also accept a motion to read by title and number. Sue moved.
A second.
Resolution one fifty-one twenty-five approving the plan of operation and governance for the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council Electric Aggregation Program for the purpose of jointly establishing and planning an electric aggregation program.
This is related to the previous legislation. This involves approving operations and governance and establishing energy electric aggregate program.
Let me scroll through these thirty pages so I can get to the next thing.
So I assume we'd leave this on also with the
That would be my
more research can be done.
I would agree. Moving on for the third reading. Resolution one fifty-eight twenty-five sponsored by Rich Hayes. Accept a motion to read by title and number. Sue moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Resolution one fifty-eight twenty-five, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So Rich isn't here. This is so that we can go ahead and fund the fireworks for next year. I still didn't scroll down far enough, unfortunately. To fund the fireworks for next year, there was, uh, this had been amended so that we go back to the thirty thousand dollars that we did this year. There is some pressure to get this done, just so that we can get on the schedule for next year. Must've skipped something there. I don't see it.
I don't see it on here.
Nope, I don't see it on here either. So we, we missed that in, in the packets, but we've been talking about, this is the third reading. The Mayor Claussen had stated, and if he wants to add anything to this, that Hamburg Fireworks Company is kinda pressuring us to get this done so that we do lock into space for next year.
Yes, with the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of our wonderful nation, there's a lot more municipalities, groups, nonprofits doing fireworks next year. So she wanted to lock us into our day so we don't get bumped out for the same, for the third that we do every year. So usually, we wait until the year of to do this, but and next year, we'll start working this into the event budget that we're talking about also.
Any further discussion? Move to adult. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to adopt. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
One fifty-eight twenty-five has been adopted, I believe. I don't, I can't see it, but I think that there was an emergency clause on it initially. So you can go ahead and enter into a contract.
I'll enter in tomorrow. I'll do that tomorrow. Thank you.
Very good. Moving on to resolution one fifty-nine twenty-five sponsored by Brent McDaniel's. Accept a motion to read by title and number. Sue moved.
Second.
Resolution one fifty-nine twenty-five, a resolution to abolish the sustainable recycling program.
Yeah, this was intended to help the sanitation department. Sounds like they were losing a lot of money through the recycling program, but we might wanna leave it on there until Salzman has a chance to look into it and see what they wanna do. I know there's a lot more problems over there than just a recycling program and it's probably gonna take a lot more than that. So you wanted to just leave that on?
Mr. Salzman, we had discussed this prior to the meeting and I think it's only fair to give you the opportunity to do a further review down there and see what your thoughts are as you get a fresh look at this. Do you have any thoughts or anything that you'd like to add to the conversation right now?
I, I don't really have anything else to add. I do appreciate that. I think the both the, the department and employees deserve that extra look to see, you know, to make sure we're doing everything we can to provide the best service and where that is. I absolutely do not have enough time in yet to even start to make that, but we've got some things set up to look further at what their needs are, both for the equipment, maintenance of the building, and, and also employees.
You have something scheduled to go meet with them?
I have, I, well, I've already met with them. That was the first visit I made, actually, was, was to them. So equipment was the next part. We have some facility needs and we're gonna look at that. And obviously, employee needs, we're short people. We've been moving people from the street department over. We do have, I think, at least one job right now, and he may have somebody interviewing for an opening there to try to get personnel back up to where it's at too, so.
I'd like to take a look down there with you too, if it's okay.
Okay, no, that would be fine.
Let me know when you, alright, thanks.
So at Mr. McDaniel's suggestion and Mr. Salzman's suggestion, I believe we should leave this on. Moving on to ordinance one sixty-five twenty-five sponsored by Greg Eads. Take a motion to read by title and number. Sue moved.
Second.
Ordinance one sixty-five twenty-five, an ordinance amending the policy and procedure manual.
Okay, so we had, no one had really had the chance to look at this last time. This was sent by the auditor earlier in the year. I don't know if everybody's had a chance. Most of this was just cleaning things up, such as we no longer have a need to have any mention of water employees or sanitary sewer plant employees. It was just a lot of cleanup. We didn't have any objections at finance at this point. So I don't know if there's any further discussion we need to have. We can, we can suspend and move forward tonight if you'd like to, or we can leave it on. Either way's fine.
I'll make the motion to suspend the three reading rule.
I'll second.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Ms. Sir Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, we'll leave that on. For those of you in the audience that are saying, why did you do that? We, we have to have six votes in order to do that. And we're short a member, so that's okay. This is how it's supposed to work.
Two readings.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Resolution one sixty-seven twenty-five sponsored by Shannon Traynor. I motion to read by title and number, please. Sue moved.
Second.
Resolution one sixty-seven twenty-five, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So there's been a lot of discussion back and forth and a lot of inquiry into whether it makes more sense to do a short-term contract at a pretty steep price or to hire a full-time position at a similarly steep price for an HR specialist, given the, the need and also the ability for a contractor to basically lay the groundwork for writing things like, you know, job descriptions, employee protocols, onboarding, offboarding, that, that kind of thing. It was determined that it would make sense to contract with our existing. I'm not sure what Clemens Nelson is other than an advisory, but they have the ability to fill an HR specialist on a short term. That would be a four-month period. It's, I believe, a monthly contract. And seventeen thousand dollars would take us through, from September through the end of December, to fulfill that position. And hopefully, like I said, lay a lot of the groundwork that wouldn't necessarily need to be repeated should we be in a position to look at a full-time employee or continue on with that contract into the new year. So this motion is, as I said, seventeen thousand dollars increase in appropriations for just to address the ongoing need for a future HR specialist. There was an emergency clause requested on this as the contract that'd be anticipated to commence in the first week of September.
So we have been discussing this for months.
Months, yes.
In months. The original, and I have notes, I'm just gonna write, read through those real quick. The original proposal was to create a new full-time position. Expected salary was gonna be somewhere between sixty-five and eighty thousand plus benefits. We asked the auditor to look at, for an alternative plan with Clemens Nelson, who currently does our payroll. We also asked her to check with other communities that have, that have a part-time position that's provided by Clemens Nelson. She did reach out and received an email from Patascala. She shared that with us at finance the other night. It sounds like Patascala's very pleased with the process and said that the person who's there also pitches in helps in other ways. So we thought this was a good, a good in-between, you know. Let's get this started. Let's see if there's really a need for a full-time position later or not. This seemed like a good alternative. Ms. Auditor, do you have anything you'd like to add to that discussion?
I do not. Thank you. I think that's very well spoken of on all the parts. I'm hoping we get some feedback from permitting you guys commit to it and approve the legislation. We'll get, hope, hoping to get some feedback so this person can then share, do we think it's a full-time need for the city? Maybe she can get the ball rolling and it's easier for us to take back over once, you know, some things are implemented.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for the auditor? On this? Okay. So this does have the emergency clause. We have proverbially kicked the can down the road for three or four months as we got more answers. On this, okay, so this does have the emergency clause, we have proverbially kicked the can down the road for three or four months as we got more answers. I think the finance committee is comfortable with moving forward with this and letting this process happen now. So there is the clause on here for the emergency clause, also by move that we suspend the rules for this tonight.
I'll second.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Okay, we'll leave that on. Moving on to resolution one sixty-eight twenty-five sponsored by Greg Eads. Accept a motion, read by title and number.
Sue moved.
Second.
Resolution one sixty-eight twenty-five, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So this is a small increase in appropriations of three thousand dollars, we have a new law director, she'd like to buy a new laptop, some other office supplies, probably changing letterhead and things. Those things have to happen at some point when you have new people there, and from what we were told the other day by the auditor, they've not had an increase in their money in many, many, many years. So this seems like this would be a reasonable request so that the new law director can get a laptop that works. We do have an emergency clause on there, before I ask, before I move that, is there any further questions for myself or the auditor on this? Okay, then I move that we suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Okay, we'll leave that on. Moving on. One sixty-nine twenty-five, resolution sponsored by Shannon Traynor, accept a motion to read by title and number.
Sue moved.
Second.
Resolution one sixty-nine twenty-five, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Is this the Stryker thing?
Yes.
Okay. This is a request from the fire department for a five-year contract payable annually in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents to enter into with a company called Stryker. This is a, essentially, a company that will provide preventative maintenance and replacement material in the event of some equipment failure, anything that is being used by fire department EMTs. This is not, this was a prior budget item but not a current, it fell out of the budget, I think by mistake for twenty-twenty-five, it was overlooked, I think because of where it fell in the year or something like that. At any rate, there is a request for emergency amount on this, I think they are without preventative maintenance contract at this period. So if we can pass this relatively quickly, it would essentially backdate, I think, to July first if I recall correctly, and allow basically the services that they are currently providing without contract to continue. This is again an annual fee of the just shy of twenty thousand dollars, but this would prevent things like the fire department being without oh, defibrillators or emergency medical equipment, anything that is subject to high use and therefore high risk of either being needing maintenance or failing altogether.
Hold off just a minute, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so Chief Eads reached out to me before the meeting, apologized, he wanted to be here, but he had a prior commitment. And we just went over some of his legislation he had tonight, and he said, if you could please ask them to pass one sixty-nine twenty-five because as Councilwoman Traynor said, this is for the repair and preventative maintenance. So if something does go down, like she said, they'll be able to come in and repair it and fix it, if something goes down and we don't have this, it could be costly to the city.
Or costly to a life, if they were talking about defibrillators or anything like that.
Sure.
It seems a small price to pay to make sure that you're never in that position of need.
Correct. Mr. Salzman, I know you have some additional information on this, maybe on what the equipment is, and did you not say it the other, or was it not mentioned the other day that if a piece goes down, they'll give us a replacement immediately?
Yeah, so this is your AEDs, the life pack, the defibrillators that go on the trucks, and also for the thumpers, the CPR machines on the vehicles. They're of such a quality, you just can't afford enough to have an extra laying around, so they take quite a bit of abuse, occasionally get dropped or whatever, but the, this, this not only provides the preventive maintenance, it replaces batteries as needed, if something's dropped, has a broken screen, it's replaced. If it's something that cannot be immediately fixed or repaired, then they provide a free loaner during that time, so we're never down on that piece of equipment.
Okay.
As would be apparent, there is a request for an emergency measure on this to both suspend and have the emergency.
Hold tight, one second, Mr. McDaniel's, you raised your hand?
No, I didn't.
No, you did not raise your hand, very good, so, I'm sorry, restate that motion, please.
Oh, I was just indicating that there was a request for both to suspend and have an emergency clause on that.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion, you can say, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
True public service concern, so yes.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Resolution one sixty-nine twenty-five has been adopted. Moving on to resolution one seventy, let me change pages here. One seventy twenty-five sponsored by Andrew Hitt. Motion to read by title and number, please.
Sue moved.
My second.
Resolution one seventy twenty-five, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So we talked about in finance meeting, the issues with computer systems getting hacked more frequently as time goes by. So there is a desire to upgrade IT and cybersecurity, and that's what this legislation is about, it's in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to upgrade IT and cybersecurity.
If I'm not mistaken, this was also something that was being required of us by the auditors, was it not?
And state law now, I think.
Yes, the state passed new legislation that's passed down to local governments that we have to implement. There is a deadline of January first, twenty-twenty-six, to implement a plan and program and enhance our cybersecurity multi-factor authentication, so yes, it is required well beyond me.
When was that passed?
June, I believe.
Couple of days.
Yep, and I took the webinar in July and brought it forward to you guys.
And there was, you've had a meeting now with?
With tech, yeah, we met with tech support on Tuesday morning. I do think it's going to cost a significantly more amount of money, but this is a good starting point. He's hitting the ground running with implementations. We've started the process of a risk assessment, and so they're going to start seeing how many logins we have and such before we can get a true quote on multi-factor authentication, but that's, we have a good plan in place, he thinks it'll take at least six months before it's fully implemented.
Which will be behind the deadline for the whole deadline, but?
Yeah, the plan we will have done timely.
Very good. Any further questions? We do have, we do have an emergency clause added to this resolution. Move to suspend.
Second.
Ms., Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor? Ms.
Yes.
Sorry. Ms. Eads?
Yes. One seventy twenty-five will be left on at this point. Moving on to one seventy-one twenty-five, a resolution sponsored by Mr. Andrew Hitt.
Sue moved.
Second.
Sorry, thanks for doing that, I didn't call for it yet, but you're ahead of me.
Resolution one seventy-one twenty-five, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So the county has been working on or completed construction of the Martin Moon ditch, tributary ditch? Is that completed or, is completed, right? And the city got billed thirty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents, and that's what this legislation is related to, is paying the city's portion for that reconstruction.
Yeah, so they started the Martin Moon Tributary Ditch project eight years ago, and they got her finished. So we received a bill in the mail for our portion of it, and it's the thirty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents, and we received that bill
Monday.
Monday, took it to finance, and
It's due within thirty days.
It's due within thirty days.
And a passage, so that we can get it paid timely.
And I just want to reiterate, it was sent to us Monday.
So is there late fees that is not paid on time?
Yes.
What kind of late fees are we talking about?
It says interest, there's not a percentage.
So we better to pay sooner than later?
And for those of you in the audience, this ditch actually affects the land that's being discussed tonight. It starts, I believe, over behind Kroger and CBS, and then it crosses underneath one forty-two, and then runs over to the railroad tracks.
It runs the tracks, I believe, yeah.
Yeah. Nobody here knew where that was, so we had to figure it out. You knew where that was? Okay, very good, we didn't at first. So we do have the emergency clause on this also?
Move for suspension.
I'll second.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
One seventy-one twenty-five has been adopted. Moving on. One seventy-two twenty-five, a resolution sponsored by Shannon Traynor, accept a motion to read by title and number.
Sue moved.
Second.
Resolution one seventy-two twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids and enter into contract.
Is this the fire department?
It is.
Okay, fire department, Chief Todd Eads is asking for two parts of improvements to be made to the fire department, one eighty-five thousand dollars for exterior renovation, tuck pointing and the like, and then fifty-five thousand dollars for showers, apparently the entire fire department is utilizing a single shower. There is apparently space for more showers, just they're not there. It is, apparently the money is in his budget, but it needs to be appropriated for that purpose. Safety service director, I believe, confirms that those upgrades would be necessary, and the total request is to increase, well, to look at, to enter bids and accept contracts for bids not to exceed one forty for the combined, combined work. And I think there was an emergency clause on this one as well because certain exterior projects like the brickwork and tuck pointing would be weather dependent, so they wanted to get in before bad weather.
That is correct, Mr. Safety Service Director, would you like to address this with council?
So I think there are two issues, one is the restroom facilities, the showers, they have one shower at the north fire station. As we discussed in the meeting, that shower is wholly inadequate for five people, but also shares literally with the toilet in the middle of the shower. There are no other showers in that facility, so the look is to replace two, I believe actually there's three total showers, so replace the one and add two others. The second part of that is for repairs to the exterior of the building. Number of years ago, they put that, I believe that'd be a Mansard roof on there, they put the T-one-eleven siding, and part of that was to block in the glass that would have been there in the previous building. That flashing has leaked, there's water coming in, leaking into the building through the roof, but it's also, the assumption is we have some rotting wood underneath that too, so that second part's to remove the T-one-eleven. We're not replacing the Mansard, we're removing it, so there's no other issues there. And then that will be replaced with, I believe, a metal siding that would look attractive with the building, but properly be sealed and prevent. So that first part is so that we can actually bid these, so because of the cost, ask to bid, we do a competitive bid for both projects. The second is the hundred and forty thousand, that number was derived from estimates that Chief Eads had acquired from different people to see what that approximate cost would be. And actually, if I could, that's one of the things I talked about, you know, we have to upkeep those facilities, these are improvements that will make that facility last longer, is part of what that look is, is to maintain. The, I'm sorry, the second part of that is also tuck point the building, and after it's tuck pointed, go back and paint that with a, it's a paint is made for brick and concrete exterior to properly, but it should allow that building to be maintained for much longer.
So to clarify, resolution one seventy-two twenty-five is to authorize the safety director to advertise and enter into contract for bids not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the said needed renovations and repairs. And then resolution one seventy-three twenty-five, it would be to increase appropriation and transfer funds in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars in order to effectuate said repairs and renovations.
That's correct.
Correct, and I believe I'll let Kenna, it'll come from fire two twenty-eight there, like, general fund in a way.
Correct, to his capital.
To his capital, two twenty-nine, we're just moving the money.
But that's the next piece.
Yeah, that's the next piece.
We're just, you know, we're trying to get through business, that's all, that's
And Mr. Salzman, it made me, it reminded me that I had a question that I would like to ask you after the meeting tonight.
Okay.
So we do have, we do have an emergency clause on this so that we can get this bid out. There is a time period that the bids have to go out, it's going to take some time. If we allow this to happen through the emergency clause, he can start the bid process here in the next couple of days, get that out, and then we'll have a chance to have some of that work done before the weather turns.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
One seventy-two twenty-five has been adopted. Moving on to one seventy-three twenty-five, we just touched on that, it is another resolution sponsored by Ms. Traynor.
Sue moved.
I think that was a motion to suspend.
No, 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 this was, sorry.
Oh, so it was a rebuttal.
To read by title and number, I apologize, I got ahead of myself.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to read.
Second.
Resolution one seventy-three twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds.
No, I got ahead of myself because I have questions for the auditor, the way this looks, looks odd, right, with section one, section two, and section three. So a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I'd like you to explain this to me because it threw me off when I read this, and I made a note to ask you about it specifically.
This should look familiar, this is how all fund transfers have to go, we increased a transfer outline, so that's what we're increasing in his two-two-eight funds. Then we're moving the money to the revenue in his two-two-nine funds, in order for him to be able to spend from that two-two-nine fund, then we increased that money that we moved in there.
But where's the, what's the twelve thousand dollars that I see here?
The what?
There's twelve thousand dollars, where's that?
Twelve thousand?
There's a hundred and forty thousand in section one, then in section two, it says hereby authorize city auditor to make the following fund transfers, and there's twelve thousand dollars there.
I'm guessing it's a typo, standby.
Well, it says transferred fire capital and then transfer in, so it's two twenty-eight nine zero.
It should be all the same dollar figure, one hundred and forty thousand from two-two-eight, a hundred and forty thousand into two-two-nine, and then also increasing a hundred and forty thousand in his, in the two-two-nine.
So does that section just have to be removed?
I think you guys might just have to amend it on record.
Just to remove that section?
No, just to amend the dollar figure to reflect a hundred and forty thousand.
So you're saying amend from, from fund two-two-eight point nine nine zero point five seven zero one five, transfer capital fund, or fire capital, make that a hundred and forty thousand dollars also, and then to the two-two-nine zero 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 four seven zero three zero, transfer in on that fund.
Yes.
We need to amend that to a hundred and forty thousand on both of those lines.
Yes, I apologize for not catching that, but yes, it should, I believe it's just a typo, probably copy and paste from a different piece.
Okay, well, I will move that we amend this to Okay, well, I will move that we amend this to, to, to reflect the correct amounts of one hundred and forty thousand dollars in section two.
Second.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's.
Yes.
Mr. Stall.
Yes.
Ms. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Eads.
Yes.
Mr. Hit.
Yes.
Now I move that we suspend three reading rule.
Second.
Mr. Hit.
Yes.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's.
Yes.
Mr. Stall.
Yes.
Ms. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Eads.
Yes.
And I'll just make it a three for, and I'll move that we adopt. Or, or a hatch, right?
I'll second.
Mr. Hit.
Yes.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's.
Yes.
Mr. Stall.
Yes.
Ms. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Eads.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Clean that up a little bit. One seventy-three twenty-five has been adopted. One seventy, moving on to one seventy-four twenty-five, if I can get there here. One seventy-four twenty-five is a resolution sponsored by Mr. Andrew Hit. I will accept a motion to read by title and number.
So moved.
A second.
Resolution one seventy-four twenty-five, preliminary participation legislation, paving and installation of a high visibility crosswalk ramps and lighting on State Route thirty-eight.
So this is for the city to participate in the, the construction on State Route thirty-eight. It stipulates that the city would be responsible for any costs outside of what's deemed necessary. I believe Bill has said that the handicap ramps have been upgraded, or the criteria specifications are different now, so that would be an additional cost. And then also, any drainage repair work that would need to be done prior to paving, that would also be the city's responsibility.
There, there's a specific list of sidewalk repairs have to be done. We believe we can do it cheaper than what the estimate from the state is, so that'll be our responsibility separate. I had a discussion with Bill this morning. That money, I believe, is available in his accounts. It just, we'll have to get our own estimates and go with that as it is. And that will have to be completed by us before that project starts.
That's supposed to start spring next year?
March of next year is our deadline to, to, to begin their process of the paving and.
Is this for the whole thirty-eight through town?
Um, no, no, Bill was going to get us that map. I think, who was in that meeting? Bill was talking about it and said he didn't have the final roads.
Well, we discussed it briefly at finance. I don't know if he also discussed it at the service committee.
I don't, I don't, did he have it at service? You guys remember him having it at service?
He actually had me on as a sponsor.
I believe he did discuss it, but I don't think he said where.
Yeah, I don't think he had the roads with him yet.
One seventy-four?
But as he, as he spoke about in finance, you know, if we don't do it, they just will say, okay. And they will skip right over us and they'll pay for another project to do. So anytime we can get state money and get ODOT money to, to.
There's also a deadline on our response to have this legislation fully executed and returned to ODOT. That deadline being October twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-five.
Hold on, so Mr. McDaniel's said originally you were going to be the sponsor. Did that go to service?
Yeah.
Okay, so it did go to service, at least for the discussion point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's fine, you can co-sponsor it. But I just wanted to know if you had any input because you were thought to be the original sponsor.
He said that they normally take care of up to ninety percent, eighty to ninety percent of the calls for it, so it'd be, like, a lot of work done.
Yeah, that's usually, when we do these projects, that's usually what it is. Our match is usually somewhere between, between ten and twenty percent is the match. Which is pretty good when they're doing those big roads and a good amount of them, so.
There's a change because we're changing the route of thirty-eight through town. We're taking thirty-eight straight down and.
Are they doing this because of that?
No, is this part of that too? Or are they considering that in this?
No, 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 no. So, no, the, you've got to think, ODOT has these projects in the pipeline for, they're five, ten years out. They, they know what they're going to do five years from now. And then when, when it comes up to our turn or our portion, that's when they start dumping these things on us and tell us how fast we've got to get it back to them.
I'm sorry, Ms. Trainer, I cut you off there. I just want to make sure we had all the input there.
Yeah, so this letter is dated July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, addressed to Mr. Long Superintendent. And we have to have it fully executed, passed legislation by October twenty-second, so we're not in a critical time crunch, but there is a, a very much a press for time in order to make sure that this is.
Besides the October twenty-second date, is there any timeliness issues that would require this to get passed sooner or?
I, we're, we're currently working on the other issues related to the sidewalks and that. The critical is that, that we have a, the resolution passed by October twenty-second.
Yeah, but we have to have the contract in by then, but, I mean, if you guys are on board with this and this is what you want to do, I, I would ask for suspension just to get, you know, get it moving.
Nobody wants to miss a deadline.
Move to suspend. No, but we do have the thirty, I mean, we have the, the emergency clause on there so that it would not be enacted, even if it went to three readings, I think we'd have enough time, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
Mr. Eads.
Yes.
Mr. Hit.
Yes.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's.
No.
Mr. Stall.
Yes.
Ms. Trainer.
Yes.
Okay, we'll leave that on. One seventy-four twenty-five has been left on. One seventy-five twenty-five, resolution sponsored by Shannon Trainor. I'm going to need a little clarification on this, I think. Motion to read by title and number, please.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one seventy-five twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract.
Okay, I think this was supposed to have gone with the, I, I think what happened was we increased appropriations, but we need to get into authority to enter into contract with the same striker company, and we got a little out of order.
Yeah, it, it just got, it just got put on the agenda in the wrong order. Usually, we would do the contract and then the money afterwards, so it's just.
So we've already appropriate, or approved appropriation of the funds. Now we need to go backtrack and approve the Safety Services Director to enter into the contract to pay said funds. All right, any other, I'm sorry, Greg, I didn't mean to say on your.
No, go right ahead, say that. Go ahead.
Any other discussion on this?
Yeah. Hearing none? Go ahead, Shannon.
Stop it.
Okay, hearing none.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
A second.
Ms. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Eads.
Yes.
Mr. Hit, Mr. Hit, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's.
Yes.
Mr. Stall.
Yes, move to adopt.
A second.
Mr. Stall.
Yes.
Ms. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Eads.
Yes.
Mr. Hit.
Yes.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's.
Yes.
One seventy-five twenty-five has been adopted. Moving on to one seventy-six dash twenty-five, resolution sponsored by Brent McDaniel's.
Yes, so Bill can still a lawnmower. Somebody broke a mower. Didn't say who, but he got him a ten thousand dollar one because this one needed a five thousand dollar engine. So trying to recoup some of that money.
It happens.
We didn't read by title and number.
I'm sorry. A motion to read by title and number, also move that we do that. Who wants to second that?
I'll second that.
There we go.
Resolution one seventy-six twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the advertisement for bids and for personal property no longer need for city purposes.
There we go. I'm a pinch hitter, I'm sorry.
Still the same lawnmower that needs a five thousand dollar engine, and he wants to sell it.
Yeah, there's not an emergency clause on this.
Nope, there's not, finally.
Council's wishes, just leave it on. Assuming, there we go. Moving on to resolution one seventy-seven twenty-five, sponsored by Greg Eads. I'll accept a motion to read by title and number. If I forget, people will tell me that, right?
Who moved?
Second.
Resolution one seventy-seven twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the lease of the city farm.
So the city owns a farm, it's out there behind Mary Mack Park. It's the old, it's the old dump, so to speak. We've got somewhere around a hundred and fifty acres, I think, was the number, somewhere in that. And two years ago, we were behind and we didn't actually get a contract until right before planting season. We are well ahead of ourselves this time. I'm glad that we are. We're, we're taking a step to move forward in the right time. So we are asking, or allowing the Safety Service Director to go ahead and put this out for bid and see if we can best, the highest and best bid so we can lease that city land out. Is there any further discussion about this? Hearing none, I will move that we suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel's.
We are.
No.
Mr. Stall.
Yes.
Ms. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Eads.
Yep.
Mr. Hit.
Yes.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
We are headed game, but we'll leave this on because we have time to do so. Very good. Moving on, one seventy-eight twenty-five, a resolution sponsored by Mr. Andrew Hit.
I'll make a motion to read by title and number.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Resolution one seventy-eight twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to accept a grant for the Fourth Street project.
So this is a grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and something to do a lot of work on the Fourth Street between North Oak and North Main. I forwarded an email to everyone earlier today. But this also has a due date of September thirtieth. And then also, there were several things that were, that were involved, like paving. I think there was a water line that mid Ohio was going to, had agreed to repair. I think it also involved the sidewalks and curbs, ramps. Is that right?
It was a lot.
I do have a copy of that. If you want to use that.
So, I mean, basically, it just involves digging up that area, the foundation, and basically redoing that whole street. So it's a grant for seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, something like that.
So this is, this is beside the courthouse, that old brick road that is awful. I mean, it's probably the worst road in London in my, in my estimation because it wasn't, could it be maintained? It wasn't maintained. Whatever it is, you've got all that concrete, you still have big holes in it. And I know that at some point in the past, the county commissioners wanted to keep that for the historical value of that. But this is what we would be faced with, I think, if we had to tear it up and fix it and put it back, I do believe. Comments from the administrative table?
What is the deadline on that, is it?
It's September, I believe, but, um, the county commissioners, I don't, I don't, I can't remember if they passed a resol- resolution saying that, you know, go ahead and fix it, I mean, because it's in such disrepair. And I'm super bummed about it. I think it's, I remember being a little kid and being on that road and thinking it was so cool. But it's just way past its time, and would we love to go in there and fix it and put all the bricks back? Absolutely, but the amount of money it would take to do that is just astronomical. When we could spend that money on other things, and then especially being able to get this grant to be able to do it. So.
Substantial amount of money to forfeit by not getting it in on time. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's.
Yes.
Mr. Stall.
Yes.
Ms. Trainer.
Yes.
Ms. Eads.
Yes.
Mr. Hit.
Yes. A motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hit.
Yes.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's.
Yes.
Mr. Stall.
Yes.
Ms. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Eads.
Yes. One seventy-eight twenty-five has been adopted. Let's, let's work.
I had mentioned.
Let's sell them. Let's let everybody buy a brick, buy a couple bricks and sell those and put those in some fund like that.
That is a wonderful question. I know, um,
they could be laid down.
When we tore the school down, we had a thing where people could come and pick some up or whatever. I will make a note and I will talk to Bill, because, you know, we also got to make sure that, uh, whatever we do, ODOT agrees to give them whatever. So, but we'll work on that. Thank you for that.
All right, moving on, one seventy-nine twenty-five, a resolution sponsored by Mr. Andrew Hit.
Uh, so this is, uh, did we vote to adopt that?
A motion, I'm sorry. You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt that last one, the one seventy-eight twenty-five.
Did we, did we adopt?
We adopted that.
Oh, did we?
We need a read by title and number.
Oh, okay, go, okay.
Oh, my gosh, where's Josh?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to read by title and number, one seventy-nine twenty-five.
I'll second that, let's do it.
Second.
Resolution one seventy-nine twenty-five, a resolution establishing a blanket and super blanket purchase order amount limited as required by ORC five seven oh five point four one D three.
Okay, so this allows for purchase orders, orders to be a blanket, which means to cover multiple expenses or equipment, that kind of thing. And it would be up to the amount of fifty thousand dollars. So I guess that would save time for people that are putting in purchase orders to some degree. Is that correct?
It'll be more time because the city has never had a maximum dollar figure established, so the state auditors have brought it to our attention as well as our current auditors.
So this is to put us more in compliance with the state audit, that we should have that process in place. Is that correct?
Correct.
So explain the difference between just a, a blanket and a super blanket.
So a blanket purchase order is one vendor with multiple purchases. For instance, you enter a utility bill and you plan to pay, your monthly utility bill could be for the whole year. Now it's going to limit it to fifty thousand dollars. It permitting you guys pass it. A super blanket is one purchase order with multiple vendors. A good example of that is uniform allowance. You know, a person buys clothing from Galls and then they order from Amazon, and it's multiple different vendors on one purchase order.
But it's all within one fund, it's not crossing funds, it's all within a single fund.
Correct, it's just the purchase order that it's.
And very possibly, the department heads can put separate things under that because they know they're doing the same work maybe with different vendors.
Correct.
Right. And, and one of the examples was next door at the police, the new police building, that fifty thousand won't go very far over there, but.
Correct, but you guys have passed legislation approving that expenditure, so that's why that verbiage is in the legislation.
There is not a, an emergency clause on this. Do we have any further discussions at this point for the auditor? Any questions from council members that weren't at the finance? On what this will accomplish? I think we can leave that one on. Okay, we'll leave that on. Moving to resolution one eight zero dash two five, sponsored by Shannon Trainor. I wrote this down this time. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one eighty, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the planning commission.
Paul, do you want to speak on this one?
Only if there's questions from council.
Okay, I'm sure there are. Do you have an intended builder at this point in time?
Yes, this would be for Arbor Homes, which is the current builder of the London Landing project that has had great success in the city. They've come out with a new product recognizing that housing costs have really soared. When London Landing started, that was supposed to be a first-time homebuyer experience. If you see the signs out there, you know, it, just costs have gone, you know, exceptionally high. Their average sales price is three hundred and seventy-one thousand. price is three hundred and seventy-one thousand, this is a company owned by Berkshire Hathaway, they've come out with a new product that builds a really high-quality house, but for a true first-time homebuyer, they, they call it the retainable living deal, but it is really, so that we have homes in this town, that our police officers, our firemen, our teachers, our librarians, the people that, you know, can afford, and it is something that I think is needed throughout central Ohio, and we've got a builder who's got experience in this particular market, has got a lot of confidence behind that, I have heard the gentleman's comments tonight, there's been, you know, a lot of dialogue with the neighbors, I've had meetings with them and so forth, nobody wants anything in their backyard, but I think we want something in our, in our town, that, that average working people can afford, people at Stanley leave town because they can't find anything in town, and I think it's, I think it's an essential product, I've come up here and talked about wanting higher-end homes in town, and I, I still believe that, but I think we want diversity in housing, because not everybody can afford, you know, the same exact type of home, and I think it's a great complement to the community with that regard.
Can you give us any, uh, already developed neighborhoods that would be of a similar home style, that we can maybe Google and take a street view of?
I, I can, I can't do it right here, I think Bell Fountain has this product, if I went right off of memory, Bell Fountain, I, I'm certain has this product, and I know they've got a couple other neighborhoods that they're doing in Ohio, they have some in Indiana as well, but this is a, you know, a pretty novel product, and I think the key is to keep it affordable, there's lots of things we can do to make it less affordable, and when we do that, it becomes less attainable, and, you know, it's just really important to keep that in mind, so, there's, there's all kinds of bells and whistles you can put in, but this is for somebody who's otherwise renting, to be able to afford a home that they can build equity in, and, you know, get their piece of the American dream.
And the homes that we're anticipating are on, the lot sizes are, they're tight, right?
The lot sizes are tight, so that they can be attainable, yes.
And the thought is that these houses are going to have what kind of spacing between the building structures?
So, there's a requirement, I believe, to have, these are forty-foot lots, and they would have, I believe, twelve-foot between the, between the homes.
And the anticipated home size would be in the eleven-hundred to fifteen-hundred size?
I've got that here, so, let me just look to, because it does range, they, you know, they're not selling a standard, you know, it's, they've got a diverse set of options for this, but the average... They've got a really nice brochure that I've read, but I don't have committed to memory, so I will have that, I will have that available for you, but it does go up to like twenty-five hundred square feet or twenty-two hundred square feet, so they have them from, I would say, eleven-hundred to twenty-two hundred, but don't quote those specific numbers.
So, I guess my initial thought was, if you, you're planning on building affordable housing for people that are already in financial, well, we'll say it maybe not in, with exceptional means to spend on housing, I'm anticipating that if you have something that's truly affordable, and especially if it's of the larger size, you're going to get a lot of blended families, blended families that are going to have lots of adults and many vehicles, and I know there was already a request to allow enough, uh, street width to have, to accommodate parking on both sides of the street, as well as two-way traffic, I guess my concern is, how many vehicles can you reasonably anticipate being able to park in front of a single lot of forty width? Would there, would these be one-car garages, two-car garages, no-car garages?
Two-car garages, and I think they have an option for three, but I don't want to swear to that, but I think they're primarily two-car garages, so you'd have two cars in your garage, two cars in your driveway, we did meet with Chief Eads, the Safety Service Director, the mayor, earlier this week, to address the road issues, because the initial proposal was for twenty-seven-foot roads, this is customary throughout much of central Ohio, it was clear from both the chief, the mayor, and the Safety Service Director, that they wanted wider roads, so we did agree to widen those roads, which will add some cost to the lots, but, you know, it was something that was, I think, sort of unanimously requested, and, and thought to be important, so I would tell you, I, I did sit down with them and look at the demographics of these folks, and the demographics are, you, you know, it, it ranges wildly from single young individuals that have one person in their home, and, you know, they're out working and so forth, that are in their twenties, and it ranged all the way up to a gentleman who was seventy-one years old, that was single and was looking to downsize from his bigger home into something that, that they could afford, so, you know, I, I would stress that it is, you know, I, I still think, I mean, my first house was thirty-four thousand dollars, so two-hundred-and-twenty thousand seems outrageous to call, you know, affordable, it is not section eight, it is not government-subsidized, it is not anything that you think of in, in that general space, it is really something that should be attainable for that worker that works at Stanley, or someone who works for the police department, someone who's in town, and, you know, the greatest, the greatest indicator that I have, we talk a lot about traffic, I think the greatest indicator we should be thinking about is go to Spring Valley Road and one forty-two, when Stanley lets out, and watch all of the people take a right turn and head out of town, and you ask, why is that, the reason is, we don't have attainable housing for those folks inside of this town, and I think that, you know, that's an essential part of a community, and so, you know, the roads have been widened in the plan, that's the update that we had from earlier this week, based on the feedback of the fire chief, of the Safety Service Director, and the mayor, so we're, we're trying to do it where it's a nice neighborhood, but it's still attainable, and keep in mind, the attainability is what we have to be most in tune with, because without that, it's, you know, listen, we can, we can do all kinds of grandiose things, and we have grandiose places in, you know, that, that we're developing in town with all kinds of features and amenities, but the price takes you to a very different place then, and so, you know, the good comparison is, go to an apartment complex, take a look at what they've got there, and say, you know, do they want to live there forever, not gain equity in their home, and do we want something that's attainable for the average blue-collar worker in this town?
Do you know if some of the plans for the various housing options from Arbers would allow for basements on any of these parcels?
None of these will have basements. Basements add about fifty thousand dollars to the house, so if you want a basement, you're, you're gravitating away from the attainable front, but none of these will have basements, they'll all be slab-on-grade, and in this particular location, you know, it's got a history of, I don't think you'd want a basement there, you'd have a wet basement.
I apologize for, it looks like our materials are kind of chopped off a little bit, but if, I remember seeing this in finance, there's a single ingress and egress, right, you know, two, two ways in, two ways out.
Right, we, we used to have four ways in and four ways out, where we used Andrew Court, which butts up right to this, and it's got an extension that actually is on my land, and we used to go out on Sharp Avenue, I met with the, you know, I had a community meeting, my kids and I went door-to-door, introduced, invited everybody to come to the butcher block for an informal meeting, to share the plans that we had initially had as conceptual plans, there were many concerns brought forth, we, you know, let's face it, nobody wants any change in their neighborhood, right, not in my backyard is, is not an uncommon theme, but the, the biggest concerns that I heard were, hey, you're going to really disrupt my neighborhood, you're going to come through Andrew Court, you're going to drive a lot of traffic through there, Sharp Avenue, you know, is not a road that's in great shape, you're going to put a lot of traffic on there, so, we tried to take as much of that feedback as we could, and incorporate that in a new design, and that's why it went to two, it's very easy to go back to four, right, if, if the, if the concern is to adjust so that there's more ways in and out, it's just that that disrupts, you know, the existing neighbors in a way that, you know, that they've expressed that they'd rather we not, frankly, we have every right to use that property, it was how it was designed, but from a neighborhood perspective, it was a conclusion after those meetings to try and minimize the traffic that goes through there, and, you know, that, that's why it's down to two instead of four today.
And, so, we're, the, the plan is for two hundred and...
Two seventy-one.
Two seventy-one houses, so you can easily anticipate what the, what the approximate between seven hundred and a thousand residents in that area?
I typically say it's three people per house, this demographic may be less than that, but generally, that's what your builders will tell you, is three people per house.
And if at least two or more of those are driving adults, you're, you're going to have a traffic congestion problem within the neighborhood, right?
I mean, the builder doesn't believe that, I don't believe that, you know, and, and frankly, that is, that, that is something that if they're, if that happens to the builder, they'll have a harder time selling their homes, and they're pretty comfortable with that plan, and, and they build thousands of homes per year, so I don't believe that that's the case.
Was there any discussion about a traffic light at Kenny and one forty-two?
There was, in our community meeting, Marshall Guy brought up that he thought that putting a traffic light at Kenny and one forty-two might address some of the traffic issues, I indicated that if that was something that the city was desirous of, that I would fund that through our N C A, and use that as part of our infrastructure improvement, so, you know, we, we were going to look at the impact of that from a, from a traffic study perspective, so that was brought up by, you know, I, I, I can't speak, when you have a group of forty people in a room, you can't say that that's what the group said, but I think that there was relative consensus around that, you've got a couple members here, would you agree or disagree with that, Teresa, or? The, 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 the traffic light at Kenny and one forty-two is being a positive?
I feel has to be some kind of calming in traffic, I live on the corner of one forty-two, it's beside Windsor, so Windsor's going to be the intersection now, and I have your concerns about current neighbors, and I would be there, because they've established for a long time, to be able to get out of our driveways and so.
Ma'am, can I ask you to step up to the mic if you're going to speak?
Sorry, did you hear anything?
I, I could hear you, but I'm sure nobody on the line could.
There was, sorry.
About a calming, something to calm traffic coming through East High Street, and honestly, we talk a lot about Stanley Electric, but really, there's Nessun, Staples, there's a new manufacturer that's coming in to fill the, across the street from Stanley, there's a lot of traffic, not just at three o'clock in the afternoon, morning, night, the middle of the afternoon, I have real concerns about a traffic light, somebody else mentioned a traffic light at Windsor, which is going to be now an intersection, instead of, the only way into Windsor Development is one way in, one way out, it's going to be a really difficult time, if that becomes an intersection, to make a left-hand turn, I live right on the corner of that, and my driveway enters and exits on East High Street, and I don't know, I think that's going to, it's already heavy, when we moved there fifteen years ago, that was the one concession, we knew we would have a lot of traffic there, a lot of traffic there, certain times of the day, you don't, you know, you don't try to pull out of your driveway, but we wanted, you know, we wanted to live there, because we love that environment, this is going to add four to five hundred more vehicles through there, and traffic's going to be a real problem, and I think the city needs to think about that really carefully, long and hard, how are you going to address that, that traffic? I don't want to have to call London Police and say, I can't get out of my driveway, I'm going to need traffic control, so I can go to work, and, and I'm not saying that to be an exaggeration, there are times I set in my driveway, you know, for fifty cars, to pass either way, so I can get out, it's nine, almost nine miles, you can drive all the way to West Jeff from Maple Richmond, without any kind of traffic signal at all, there's no stop sign, there's no, so traffic is moving all the time, four-thirty, four o'clock in the morning, I listened one night and started counting, and I was shocked how much traffic passes at four A M., sorry. So, that's my concern, and I, I will say, on behalf of the neighbors, we all knew, a lot of, there are some that don't want this development, a lot of us know it's going to happen, and we're okay with that, we do need affordable housing in the community, but I think we have to remember, we're creating communities, neighborhoods, and if it is affordable, a lot of people are, may have children, they need a place to play, they need a place, they need green space, and we don't want them on top of each other, and creating unneighborly situations, you know, we want to, we want to have yards and green space for people to play and be able to park and have people over, and, so, I think we have a lot of concerns, we don't mind the project, I don't think, most of us have come to terms that it is going to be developed, and that's fine, and the product did seem like it was a nice developer, I mean, the homes did look very nice, they had a lot to offer, but the traffic is, is a huge concern, and the density of the product, project, those homes, there's three homes on East High Street, just west of me, one home will have five backyards in their backyard, one home will have six yards in their backyard, and the next home will have five yards in their backyard, so, they did talk about using some kind of trees to create a barrier, but, I mean, that's tight, that's a lot of yards in your backyard, so.
Paul, do you have any response to the request for parks or more play area or green space?
Yeah, I think the question really is, do we want, we could do all kinds, you know, across the street, people talked about the Polte Project, which still hasn't taken place, right, and they put some park areas in, and they said, hey, let's do it like Polte does across the street, those are half-million-dollar homes, right, there's no problem selling, the Polte Projects are half-million-dollar homes today, you can look at, I, I, I'm in touch with.
They weren't when they came in.
I, I understand, but that was a long time ago, and housing costs have, yeah, housing costs have gone up, you know, substantially, right, and so, what I would tell you is that you can do anything, but you can't have everything and do anything, meaning, you, you, you can erase the attainability of these if you go down these paths, and I, I would say, based on the community feedback, we've put a tremendous amount of walking paths and open space and things of that nature, and the notion that you have a park in your backyard, or your front yard, as the case might be, right, but, but, but that's, that's not, that's not the expectation, right, like that, no one builds a park as a part of that, and, you know, we're talking about, on one hand, all the cars that these people are going to have, and then the other hand, we're talking about how many minutes it takes to walk to the park, right, there's Stanley Park, that's right down the road, there's Merrimack, there's Cowling Park, and these folks are looking to, you know, they're looking, there's not a park at the apartment complexes, right, there's not a park at Kenny, you know, at the, at the condos, there's not a park in, in any, in every, you know, location in town, so it's, it's just not practical if you want affordable housing, we've got developments right now underway, where there's in-ground pools and clubhouses and pickleball courts and shuffleball, shuffleboard courts and all kinds of things, but those are not going to be affordable housing, right, and so, if you want that, it's, it's got to all tie together, and the math's still got to work, so, the real question is, do we want attainable housing in London, Ohio, if we want attainable housing, there's, there's a certain path, do I want to be a good neighbor, I absolutely do, and I've, I've demonstrated that, if I show you the original design and the feedback that I've got, I mean, I've taken extraordinary efforts to try and incorporate that, can I make everyone happy at all times, rega- you, it's just impossible to do that, right, because there's always going to be one more thing, you can give one more thing, but at the end of the day, then you don't have attainable housing, and it's important to, it's important to understand how those pieces come together.
Okay, are, are you done?
I think so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, well, it's going to be more, it's going to be more of a statement than questions, but I'm sure you'll want to address, at the, at the finance meeting, this was brought to us on Monday night, I did ask the question, what if city's council doesn't agree with this, what if city council wants to see changes, and, and Mayor Klosser said he didn't know the answer, he was nice enough to check with law director, and basically, if city council decides to vote this down, and I think there's a lot more to it than what I'm saying here, but if we don't approve this, then the, the comment was, the project's dead, I don't know that that's true, I think the project would be dead in its current state, as everything is, because the zoning committee, or the planning commission has made their recommendations, however, I made that discussion, or that, that point, and then the next day, Mr. Gross visited me at my office, and we had a really long back-and-forth discussion about, about this whole situation, and I, I said to him that I thought the density was a huge problem, and I didn't have, I hadn't done much research at that point, but I had, I thought I knew that a lot size was supposed to be a minimum of seventy-five hundred, I I know that the planning commission can make changes to that and that's up to them, especially when you have a PUD. But I did go online today and read through that. And I pulled down, you know, what an R1, an R2, an R3, what those things are and what it says for lot size and what it says for the width and all of that. And that is, I don't remember the section, but I think it was 124807 if I'm not mistaken. So if anybody wants to look that up in the, the city codified ordinances, I believe it's 124807. So we, we discussed lot size and, and when I look at, at the, at the R3 and it says 7,500 square feet and the planning commission can, can give a 25% variance on that. That makes a lot, no, no less than 5,625 square feet. There's a lot of lots on here that are 40 by 100. That's 4,000 square feet. My argument with Mr. Gross is, you know, you're only using 60% at this point of what we had down as an allowable lot size of 7,500. And then, so I pulled 126208. It says lot, yards, setbacks and other dis requirements for proposed uses. So, you know, I looked that up on the 25%. The lot width, the setback and, so Section B, lot width setback and yard requirements may be varied to accommodate a variety of structural patterns, clustering designs and housing types. However, the total of all reductions must be matched by an equal total of increases, except as provided elsewhere in this chapter. Where I don't know if we're decreasing things where the increase is put into place. I don't see that. I didn't go to their meeting. I don't, the planning commission, I don't know. You guys went there, so it may have been discussed. I don't know. But then I, I, I wrote this next question down. If the width can be decreased by 25%, or can the width be decreased by 25%? And that would get you down to a 45-foot minimum width, right? But I don't know if it's the lot size or the width. That's, there's no clarification there. So I was, these were the things that I've thought about. Then I went, went a step further. And we have a gentleman that lives on Andrew Court. My first, when I first got married, I lived on Andrew Court West, or Andrew Court East, I'm sorry. And I decided to look at that lot and see how big that lot was. Well, that lot was 60-foot wide, but that lot was also 170-foot deep because it backs right up to Nessun. So it was a much larger lot. So, so, you know, I had 10,500 square feet in my lot. And I didn't think that was fair, so I used another property from Andrew Court. I actually used Andrew Court West, 110 Andrew Court West. And it was 60 by 125. That is 7,500 square feet. No one's going to say that those yards are huge. Is that, should that be a, a number that we want to use? Then I looked at my current house and it's also 7,500 square feet. It was built in 1956. So obviously it was allowable there. I decided, I looked at Channing. Channing's very similar to Andrew Court. And I looked at one, it had 9,000 square feet. And then there was a discussion about the area off of Sharp Avenue. So I looked at one on Birchwood. It was 60 by 100. That's 6,000 square feet. That's still greater than the 5625. But, but let's not stop there. 406 Luke's Circle, that's in the current development at London Landing. 67 by 134, almost 9,000 square feet, the way I measured it, almost 9,000 square feet. And, and Mr. Mayor, his, his lot is, is, I believe, 10,070, or pardon me, 11,070 square feet, which is a quarter of an acre, right? And that used to be what I heard was, was what, what it was. And Mr. Mayor, I'm just asking you, and as the Planning Commission Chairman, can you imagine putting three houses on your lot? Because that's almost where we're at if you're going down to 4,000 per lot. So I mean, I did these things because I wanted to have this argument. Because when we had the discussion yesterday, there was a lot of feedback. And, and Mr. Gross asked me this question. And I'm not talking out of school. He said, who, who are you going to hurt? Because I said, I think you should take properties out and make the lot sizes bigger. This was the discussion. It was back and forth. There was no animosity there. And, but he said, who are you going to hurt? Because there's going to be 40, if I suggested 40. Take 40 out. Let's see what that looks like. No, I, that was the number I pulled out of the hat. I didn't know what I was looking at, really. And he said, well, you're going to, you're going to, there's going to be 40 families that won't be able to buy an attainable house if we do that. And, 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 and he said, who are you going to hurt? Well, I don't think I'm going to hurt anybody because this plan's not in place yet. Whatever, whatever's decided by the planning commissioner or council, I think these are things that we do have to discuss and talk about before you get a final plan. I just don't know how it works from here. But I just want to let you know that I have some of the same concerns that you guys on the density. I think we need this attainable housing. I want a place for my kids to be able to afford to buy a house. If maybe this is, well, this will be it more so than many other things. So I'm not, I'm not in, I, I'm not opposed to this at all. I'm just opposed to parts of this.
So if I could respond to some of those issues, because you, you represented a number of things as facts that I think were respectfully taken out of context, right? And one, one thing that I'd like to state is we're using 40 by 100. That is the smallest lot in the entire 271 development. That is not the average size of the lots in the development. There are lots that are bigger. So when you use and cite lots from London Landing, we are building a different housing type there. But you didn't use the average size for London Landing either. You used one of the larger ones in London Landing because there's different features and attributes that you have as that goes through. But London Landing's at $371,000 per house. I'm proud of that. I'm, 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 I'm the guy who created that. There's a need for that. We're, we're demonstrating that the need is there. So the, the communities that have the greatest homelessness in America are the communities that care the most about the homeless. California, New York, Illinois. Because they have policies and they have procedures that drive people out of their homes and they make it impossible to attain a home. So we can do all kinds of things to talk about, you know, how we can make the, make, make the lawn that they have to mow larger, but that's not what they're looking for. So at the end of the day, where I would say that the, the comment, when I said, who loses? Who do you hurt? Who benefits when you change the density? And I recognize that the density is tight. It's 4.9, it's 4.9 homes per acre. That's, that's the density. 4.9 homes per acre, okay? That, that's the actual number. When you say, hey, get rid of 40, what you do is you take $2.5 million and you apply that same $2.5 million times the other 231 homes. So you make it unattainable, not only for those 40 that you referenced, but for the other 231 people. Because that's the amount that the price of those lots is going to go up. Your, your development cost, your road, your water, your sewer, your storm, all the things that we want to do right. And especially with the storm, because this is an area that's going to need a substantial investment to make sure that it's properly drained. But all those things don't just go away because you got rid of 40 lots. The price of that gets applied to the other 231 homes. So you make sure that you don't have attainable housing for anyone. That's what happens. That's just the math. I'm, I'm not popular speaking about density, but I can tell you, that's what's, that's the math. And so instead of attainable housing, we can do, you know, housing like the 270, or $371,000 product that Arbor has and sell houses and, and, and that, that model works. But you won't have diversity in housing. And I think that we should have homes that are really nice homes, that are very expensive. And we should have homes that are step-up homes. And we should have homes that are first-time buyer homes. And we should have homes that help people get out of a rental situation into a homeowner situation. And sometimes when we over-regulate, we end up with people that, in our case, I don't think we're going to have blue tarps in London, so that's not my point. My point was that over-regulation leads to housing problems. In central Ohio, we have a housing problem. Former Congressman Stivers came before this council two years ago, or maybe three years ago now. And he spoke about the very biggest challenge that central Ohio faces is lack of attainable housing. Those, he, he's the head of the chamber. He's our former representative in the United States Congress. The number one thing that he talked about is attainable housing. We can consciously choose not to have that in London, but make no mistake about it. When you mess with the math, you make it not work for anybody. It's not just the 40 people that didn't buy a home inside of that neighborhood. It's the other 231 homes that are no longer in this profile. And let me tell you, with interest rates being, you know, I would say normal, but high compared to what we've experienced the last 15 years. You just change this by a couple hundred bucks a month and it's no longer effective for those people to be able to own their own home and they'll stay in a renting position. That, that's just the reality of it. And that's okay. If that's the decision of council, if that's the decision of London, that's okay. But that won't work for an attainable housing product. And these are, they, they're going to put their money into their home and not into a larger lot. That's, that's the trade-off here, right? Like, there's people today that want four-bedroom homes. There's people today that want an office in the home. You don't get four bedrooms plus an office in the home without driving the price of the home up. So you've got to have trade-offs in all of these things. So that, that's all I would respond to on that front.
Can I ask him something?
Sure.
How many houses have you built in London now?
I don't build any. I developed lots. But 300 at London Landing, we've got 306 under contract with D.R. Horton, which are under construction and 130 with M.I. Homes. The K-Hov and some of the others are planned, but not yet, you know, that's still cornfields and things of that nature. So, and, and I would, I would dare say, Councilman McDaniel said, when London Landing started, everybody said, this won't work. And I said, you know what? The, the builder is the one who's telling me what they're looking for. And there's no one closer to knowing what works than the people who take the capital risk of building that home and buying those lots. So when these people buy these lots from me, they take them in bulk takedowns. That means they're going to buy 65 at a time. They're going to pay me for that. I, I hand them over to them. They have to make sure the plan works for them or they're not going to buy them at all, right? Like, they're not going to say, hey, you guys can do all this and elevate the lot price up to a, you know, a level that, that doesn't work anymore. And we have to look at more than just the lot. Because every one of these homes is going to get hit with a $17,500 tap fee from Mid-Ohio, right? Like, these things, these things add up and it's, it, it becomes death by 1,000 cuts. Because everybody thinks that, hey, my tap fee doubling doesn't affect that home buyer. It absolutely affects that home buyer. This lot conduct, you know, like getting rid of some of this density, minimizing it by those 40 lots. Oh, that doesn't hurt them. It's $2.5 million spread across 231 homes. That's going to hurt them, right? Like, each of these things will have an adverse effect. Now, the people that are doing it and actually growing the income tax in this community and growing the property tax, taxes that are benefiting the city schools, taxes that are benefiting this, this council and the city at large, they're experts in knowing what that market can and will do. Now, you know, if we, I don't think I know better than them, right? I listen to them and say, tell me more about your product. Tell me more about how you're having success. Tell me what I have to do to be successful here. And then I go out there and I design and develop around that. And if I design and develop around it, they'll say, okay, I'm going to buy 65 lots this year and I'll buy 65 lots next year and I'll make this a success, you know? The, the one, the one group and Councilman Eads, you'll remember this because it was in this very room when Pulte was here pursuing their project. You called them out and said, hey, appreciate the way you did it, Gross. You could learn something from them. Not a direct quote, but pretty close to that, okay? I would just submit to you that London Landing Phase Four is, is under development right now and ready to conclude this year. Pulte hasn't moved a, a, an ounce of dirt, right? So that, that there is a way to get it done. There's a right way and a wrong way. And I think everyone should be proud of what's happening there and, and the things that we're doing is trying to do right by this community. And will that bring traffic? Yes. And so if you own a business in this town, look out. There's going to be more customers. I'm sorry. That's just the way it's going to be. And, and, you know, as a restaurant owner, as a movie theater owner, as anything owner, if you're the Dwyers, okay? We need, businesses need growth. Without growth, you die. And so there, there will be growth. And you know what? State routes, I live on State Route 42. Teresa lives on State Route 142. That's where the traffic is designated to go. We want it on those roads, not side roads. Now, do I hate it when I'm trying to pull out of my driveway or pull into my driveway and I got a wait and there's long lines? I feel your pain. I deal with it every single day. So.
Well, Mr. Gross, thank you for all of that. I think you took my comments with Pulte a little out of context too, but that's okay.
You hurt my feelings, Councilman.
Yeah, I, I, I think it was a little out of context, but that's, that's okay.
Well, the good news is it's on record. We could probably find it and, and, and have a beer over that or something.
I'm sure we could. Yes.
I want to say something.
Sure, please.
Back in the 70s, Andrew Court and all that was known as affordable housing. And we had it in town quite a bit. And we had owned developers here in town, 4 &amp; 1 built all that. And people complained after a while, they, it's getting government grants. But that's a lot of that, but look at them now, what they cost. How times have changed over the years, but we need affordable housing.
If you can't own your first home, you can't own a home, right? That's just the reality of it. And this is, this is an attempt for people to own their first home. And if we, if we want to engineer it so that that's no longer the, the, the possibility just based on the income, that, that's, that's, that's the reality of what will happen.
But people thought that was small lots back then.
Right. And, you know, Councilman Eads and I talked about the Madison County Comprehensive Plan where they're trying to preserve farm ground. So they have all kinds of crazy 200-foot by 600-foot. And you, you can't build on less than five acres. And if you've got a flag lot, you've got to have 20 acres and you've got all. I said, it's really counterintuitive if you think about it, right? It's counterintuitive to think, if we're trying to preserve farmland, we want to see how big a footprint we can take out of production rather than saying, hey, let's preserve farm ground by being more efficient with the land that we use. And you look at some of these lots out in the country that don't get mowed and don't get kept up and so forth, not because they're sloppy homeowners. They just mow around their little house and leave everything kind of grow up. I'm not sure that that's a better use. You know, I, I use Deer Run Lane. Wouldn't be possible with today's comprehensive plan. It's one of the nicest cul-de-sacs in the county. You've got beautiful homes on there. They're not huge lots. They're not small lots. They're certainly bigger than the lots that I'm talking about. But it wouldn't be permissible today in the county's comprehensive plan because they're not big enough lots. Now, that's silly, right? Like, that's silly. You've got all of your traffic on one road and it comes out to Spring Valley. And they come and they go and, you know, it's the way I've always known it since I've been here. But I think that's a beautiful subdivision and it's not because they've got the biggest lot. That's not the contest. How nice is your home? Can you afford your own home? Can you maintain the lot that you have?
Commissioners want big lots. That must be why we have so many sun, solar farms.
That's right.
Okay, well, knowing that we're going to have three more hearing, or three more council meetings that this will be on, and knowing that there's going to be a public hearing scheduled for October 2nd. Anybody that's in the audience, anybody that's listening, I, I encourage you, if you have questions, write those down. Bring them to the next meeting. You can email the council members. Our emails are all on the city website. But I will say, it's better if you come speak for yourself and ask your questions, right? There's always a little bit of a question if somebody sends us an email. Should, or should we read this aloud or should we just keep it to ourselves? Do we need to get permission to read it aloud? Because I think some of those arguments are valid and should be brought up. But I've upset somebody by reading their email before. So we want to make sure that we're not trying to upset anybody in that way. So shall we move on?
Let's.
Let's. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 18125, resolution sponsored by Shannon Trainor. I'll accept a motion to read by title and number. Sue moved.
Second.
Resolution 18125, resolution adopting the recommendations of the planning commission.
So this one came in late after Finance Committee had concluded its session. I think there was just a misunderstanding as to whether or not it needed to be brought before council. This has already been approved by the planning commission. This is a preliminary development plan for the, for Cypress Church, being represented by Dustin Todd. Location of said church is to be on Kenny Boulevard 2. If you're looking at the Chamber of Commerce, immediately to the right of the Chamber of Commerce in what is now some field or farm ground. I'm not sure which it is. There are some development plans, including plenty of parking and some green space, it looks like. Floor plans and the like. It's, in my opinion, not a terribly pretty building, but that doesn't seem to be of, I'm not sure that that is either here and there. It's a generic, I would call it a pole barn church. But this is also coming on for a public hearing. If anybody has any interest in reviewing the preliminary plans and designs for the Cypress Church next to the Chamber of Commerce. the preliminary plans and designs for the Cypress Church next to the Chamber of Commerce, public record.
Thank you. A comment going for, for more for the previous on 18025, Ms. Trainor commented that it's, what we have in front of us is a little hard to read, it's way blown up. I'd really like to get a complete packet for every council member that actually has the documents that we can read, not just part of it, because it's been blown up to the point that we can't see a lot of it. And I think that should be made available on the city website for both of these, and I also think that if people want to pick up packets, they should be able to do that and look at that, because it has all of the information from the planning committee, it has, it has all of the drawings, it has what was, what was requested, and what has been suggested by the planning commission, so I would like to see that. I don't know how we do that, Mr. Clerk, I don't know if that's something that you can help with, or we have to ask, we have to ask Mr. Gross to supply that to everybody, but I would like to get that by the next meeting for everybody, and then get it on the city website. Okay, moving on, let's go to roundtable. You want to go first, Mr. McDaniel?
Sure.
There you go.
I would like to thank everybody for coming out, it's a pretty big crowd tonight, and everybody watching. Looking forward to fixing the problems at the sanitation department. I'm going to take care of that. Other than that, I'm going to...
Okay. Mr. Hitt?
Uh, yeah, there's a lot of things going on in London, a lot of stuff. Appreciate everyone out here showing an interest in what's happening in London or watching. The next public service meeting is September 9th, 5 o'clock in the meeting room next door, and the finance meeting is September 22nd at 5:30 in the meeting room next door. And that is it.
Thank you. And Shannon, while, while you're looking that up, I don't have, I don't have my phone, so it didn't go off tonight, so I don't have the calendar in front of me, what's the fourth, the fourth Monday in September going to be? So we'll move on. Mr. Stall, what would you have?
Just want to thank you for coming, I'm always glad to hear everybody's ideas, it's different from mine, and it helps to change my mind. And I've had several people call me, live on Union Street, we've had this problem before, parking where the gentleman has a shop there. They say they have to park all the way down to Fifth Street, and they have to double park to get their groceries in the house, and they're not there just all day, they're there for several days, and they park in the sidewalk, and people coming out of McDonald's can't see because their sidewalks block, and you have to get way out in the street. And I told him I'd bring it up at council again. So, Mr. K, I guess he's taken over, even in the church parking lot, he's parking at times too, and several of them just complaining, and I told him I'd bring it up. And I want to wish good luck to the London football team, Columbus paper picks them, and Watterson, and London to be in the state championship, so let's hope it works out. And also, I'd like to shout out to my wife on the 30th for celebrating our 50th anniversary.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Ms. Jackman?
Um, we've been here for a long time this evening, I'm not going to add much to that. I did notice that Jody Pickett is in our audience, he is the pastor of Cypress Church. We didn't give him a chance to speak, and I didn't know if he had anything to add to the development plans over there on Kenny Boulevard.
We're going to make it a preview.
No, that'd be great. That's all I had.
Ms. Trainor?
Uh, September 22nd, next Finance Committee meeting.
I appreciate that, giving me the backup and you two, Kenna. I, thanks everybody for coming out, I, I'm glad to see the engaged people that are going to be around this project, I think it's important that you stay engaged. And again, I'm not, I'm not, I really want to see attainable housing, so we just have to see how we can work that out, make it good for everybody. We're going to, we'll see you at the next meeting, hopefully, I won't be in this chair, and I'll be down there, and I won't have to miss any. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.